Okay, good morning. During the declared emergency, Committee of Adjustment virtual public hearings are being conducted by electronic means through WebEx, an online digital platform, and streamed on Toronto City Planning YouTube channel. These measures are necessary to comply with physical distancing requirements and in-person attendance limitations. This will be a virtual public hearing, and participants who have registered in advance will be able to make their presentations to the committee using WebEx, an online event that is being moderated by city staff. Anyone wishing to view the hearing may do so by watching on YouTube. Participants who have registered in advance will be connecting through their computer, a phone or tablet app, or by telephone. All participants will automatically be muted on entry, and when your item is called, each participant will be unmuted by the moderator, one person at a time. The Committee of Adjustments will be participating by... Only the Committee of Adjustment members will be participating by video. Any registered participants will be participating by audio only, and we ask that you also mute your devices until you are called on to speak. Land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that the land we are meeting on is a traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anishinaabe, the Chipewa, the Hadnashoni, and the Wendat peoples, and is no home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit and Métis peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty 13 with the Mississaugas of the Credit. In accordance with Sections 45 and 53 of the Planning Act 1990 as amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of the city Toronto is now called to order. The Committee of Adjustment considers applications for variances from the provisions of the zoning bylaw that apply to the property, permissions to extend or awful law... to extend or lawful, non-conforming uses, and consents to sever properties to create new lots. Receiving a copy of the decision of the committee. Anyone wish... in attendance today who wishes to receive a copy of the decision of the committee on an application must submit a written request for a decision by email. Please ensure that you include your name, your address, and your email address, because Committee of Adjustment and the T-Lab in the event of an appeal will be sending appeal updates and notifications by email. If you do not agree with the decision of the committee here today, decisions may be appealed to the Toronto local appeal body, T-Lab, or in some limited circumstances to the local planning appeal tribunal, L-PAT. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision of the committee. The hearing procedure will be as follows. Unlike the non-virtual world where we vet the agenda and do the uncontested matters first, in the virtual world we go in order. So I'll call each item in the order listed in the agenda. When you make your submissions, when an application is uncontested, the applicant or agent may proceed with their presentation if desired. When the committee does not require a presentation, applicants are to advise the chair should they wish to speak to the committee. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into the committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant or agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. I will comment when you're reaching the five-minute mark. When addressing the committee, please start off by clearly stating your name and address for the record, and please remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. The applicant or agent goes first and will make a presentation to the committee. Please note that the committee may not entertain revisions to proposals at the hearing today. The committee may decide to defer the application if being substantially revised in order to ensure that the revised application is accurate and that all those entitled to notice of the application have been informed of the changes. Then individuals either in support or opposed to the application will be invited to speak. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they've finished their presentation, and when all speakers are finished, the applicant or agent is given an opportunity to rebut only those issues that were raised by the speakers, not to introduce new information, but only to respond to those issues and questions raised. That will then mark the end of the discussion. The application is then taken into the committee for a decision. Okay, some preliminary matters. To confirm the minutes of the last meeting, which is March 23rd, our April 13th meeting was canceled due to notice issues and will have to be rescheduled. So it's March... the March hearing. Can I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll move to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer.
Neil Palmer.
Second... Ms. Alderson, thank you. All in favor? Minutes are approved. Okay. Are there any declarations of interest panel or staff in the matters before us in this morning's agenda? Okay, none to declare? And Mr. Secretary Treasurer, Mr. Carvalino, deferral requests?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Do we do those as we go through, or should we get dispensed with them now, I guess?
I would recommend dispensing with the morning session deferrals. There's two that we're aware of, items 10 and 12.
Okay, so item number 10 is 86 Fauk Avenue. It's for a detached dwelling with an attached garage with seven variances. Planning was recommending refusal or transportation conditions, and three letters of opposition, and four she was opposed. The applicant is asking for a... have this matter deferred. That was set out in the second additional materials. So is the applicant with us on this application? See, it's Rachel Wang.
Yes.
There are three neighbors scheduled to speak as well. So we have Rachel Wang, agent. Good morning.
Yes. Good morning. This is Rachel. Actually, I'm also the applicant of this project. Actually, I had a phone call with the planner, Torista James, a couple days ago.
Can you slow down? I'm having trouble understanding you. Ms. Wang, could you just try to slow down? I'm having trouble hearing you.
Yes. Okay. My name's Rachel Wang. I'm the applicant of this project. Actually, I had a phone call with the planner, Torista James, a couple days ago. Both of us think we should have some discussion... more discussion about this project. That's why I applied to defer today.
Okay. So we have... I don't know. We see we have two speakers from your next-door neighbor. We'll only now need to hear from one of them either in the future on the merits and now on the issue of the deferral request. So either Alan McEntee or Grace Karam?
Mr. Chairman, Alan McEntee is on the call. Grace Karam is not, so I can go in and unmute Mr. McEntee in a minute.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. McEntee is unmuted.
Mr. McEntee? Hi. Okay, so questions here?
Can you state your name, sir, just to start off?
It's Alan McEntee.
Okay, and you're at 88 Fauk, correct? Right next door. So the applicant, your neighbor, is asking to have this matter be deferred? So we'd just like to know not... we don't want to hear from you on the merits right now, just on the issue of the deferral. Are you opposed to the deferral, or are you okay with that? Hopefully, the applicant will be making changes and perhaps can consider... I see there are three opposition letters. They also have the planning letter recommending refusal, so perhaps they're going to reconsider the application and make some changes. So are you okay with that?
Yes, we're comfortable with the proposed changes. Hopefully, it's to reduce the size of the house.
Okay, and you'll be given notification as well on that, but when the matter is brought back onto committee, you'll be re-notified.
Okay.
And then we also have a neighbor at 50 Albright Avenue, registered to speak. John Drake Klajek. Not pronouncing it correctly.
Don't say nothing. Good morning.
So the applicant is asking just on the matter of the deferral request?
Yeah, we're okay with that. We're just wondering if it was possible before they get resubmitted that, you know, if there was any way that we could do a meeting, so we're not in this position again.
Okay, so perhaps... I don't know if the applicant or the agent has your contact information, but it'd be a good idea if they haven't already discussed with the neighbors and shown them what they plan on doing, that that would be a good thing for them to do while they're in the deferral period before they bring the matter back on. So we can't demand that, but we can certainly recommend it.
Thank you.
Thank you. You'll be re-notified as well when this matter's brought back on. Okay, so committee members, we have a request for deferral. We've heard from the two neighbors who are registered to speak. Is someone ready to make a motion, or does someone have any questions for either the neighbors or the applicant?
Mr. Chair, I'll move deferral to enable a consultation with Planning Department with a view to revising the application.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Taylor. Second...
Sophia, I'll second that.
Thank you, Sophia. All in favor? Okay, the matter is deferred. Okay, and the next one, I believe, is item number 12, Mr. Carvalino. 136 Fourth Street. And this is, I believe, an automatic deferral. I see we also have a... in the additional materials, we do have a formal request from the agent, but I had this written as an automatic deferral.
Yeah, I guess, Mr. Chair. The applicant has made changes to the proposal, and new variances are required, so we will reschedule this item if the committee is...
Okay, so I guess we just have to hear briefly from the agent and the neighbor at 134 next door who registered to speak. Ian Cunha? Mr. Cunha, are you with us?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Members of the committee, Ian Cunha representing the owners of 136 Fourth Street. The Planning Department has asked us to make some substantial changes to the project, which we have done. Unfortunately, the new zoning review has not been finished off yet by the zoning examiner, so we will have to wait until that is done, so we have the new variance list to be able to bring it back to the committee.
Okay, and I see we have one neighbor registered, the next-door neighbor. I don't know if you've been in contact with the next-door neighbor, but perhaps we're going to just hear from them on the matter of deferral, that before you come back, if you could perhaps you or your client could perhaps show them the revised plans, that would perhaps be beneficial.
Absolutely.
Okay, so is Tanya Carey there? Neighbor at 134 Court Street, next door?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, so you're... the applicant has asked that this matter be deferred. It has to be deferred because there's some changes, and they have to... there'll have to be a re-notification? So I know...
Yeah.
I don't need to hear from you on the merits just now, just on the matter of the deferral.
Yes, that's acceptable. That's fine.
Okay, and I don't know if you've had any discussion with your neighbor or their agent, but I've just mentioned that perhaps there could be some consultation before the matter is brought back on to go through the changes in the revised application.
Yes, and that is why I did join today, because they said there were changes, and we just wanted to confirm what was going to happen, so that's why I just wanted to sign on today.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, committee, so can I have a motion to defer this in order to have that recirculated based on revisions and new variances identified on...
I'm happy to make that motion for deferral.
Thank you, Ms. Alderson. Thank you, Sophia. I saw your hand. Sophia Riddick seconds that motion. All in favor? The matter is deferred. Thank you, Mr. Cunha and Ms. Carey. We'll see you again here some other time. Okay, I believe that's the... that's all for the morning agenda in terms of deferrals. Okay, having said that, then, we can go back and start hearing applications. Item number one is 2497 Lake Shore Boulevard West. It's an application to legalize and maintain an existing one-story rear addition. There is only one variance. We have applicant submission and arborist report in order to comply, and... right, and then just something was... it was removed from the February 23rd hearing and registered to speak on this application is only the... is Daniel Falzone, who is the agent. Mr. Falzone?
Yes, so, Mr. Chair, my name is Daniel Falzone. I'm here on behalf of the 2497 Lake Shore Boulevard West. As you guys know, this small addition in the rear, the swelling, has already been extracted. We're trying to legalize what was done. I didn't see any staff report. We didn't receive a staff report, so I'm assuming there's no...
Yeah, I see. You've submitted pictures as well, which shows the addition that was, I guess, started without a permit and just to identify these variances. We don't have anyone else writing in with concerns or here to speak to this matter, so let's just see if committee members have any questions for you, Mr. Falzone, or if someone's ready to give a motion. Any questions for the applicant? Okay, if none, someone ready to make a motion? Mr. Taylor, see your hand up.
Mr. Chair, I find that the application meets the four tests under the Planning Act, and I move for approval with no conditions.
Thank you. Second for that motion.
Happy to second that.
Okay. I saw three hands go up, so that's going to make the next part easy. All in favor? Okay, the application is approved. Thank you, Mr. Falzone. Okay, item number two is 110 Brookhaven Drive. This is an application to legalize and maintain west-side shed and a rear yard covered porch. There are two variances, again, in order to comply, and planning has a recommended condition of approval. This space is not to be used for heritable space. The agent, we have on this application Deborah John, and as well, we have the neighbor from 113 Brookhaven scheduled to speak, registered to speak. Is Ms. John there?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, this is Deborah John. Thank you for hearing me here and committee members.
Okay.
I'm applying for a red sideyard shed and the rear yard porch. Two variances have been applied for.
Okay, so this was built without a permit, I take it?
That's right, and I got involved in it to do all the due diligence and the legalization of it.
And you're okay with... you and your client are okay with the proposed condition from planning?
Yes.
Okay, so I don't think we need a presentation. Let's just hear what the next-door neighbor, or the neighbor actually, not next door, at 113, it looks like it's across the street, what their concerns are, and you'll have a chance to respond. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. John before we move on to the next speaker? Okay, so Chow Sun. Do we have Chow Sung on the line?
Mr. Chairman, Chow Sung is unmuted, but there's no audio coming. I don't know why. He wasn't present during sound checks. I couldn't troubleshoot at that time.
Okay, thank you, Adam.
Oh, can you hear me?
Oh, yes. Is that Mr. Sung?
Yeah, sorry. Okay.
Welcome, welcome. So we'd just like to know what are your concerns with this application?
I don't know. It's... I think it's... but they changed the zooming, so I want to make sure how much they change it, how give the change to the street. Because we are the neighbor. I don't want the street to change too much.
Okay, but apparently it's already there, so what they're going to be... it's for the west-side yard shed? Is that west side? It's... you're across the street, right? So you don't really...
Yeah.
...this west, and the rear yard covered porch, so you're really not personally affected by this? People would be affected would be the next-door neighbors, or maybe the neighbor in the back.
Yeah.
But if you're across the street, you're really not affected by this?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Not too much change... too much in... in fact, to me, it's more, in fact, to the neighbor. Just a concern about that one, yeah.
Right, so the neighbor on either side of 110 Brookhaven is not here with any complaints? They haven't written in any complaints? The Planning Department thinks it's okay? They just don't want it to be used for living space?
Yeah, if the neighbor just nearby him is okay, so I think I'm should be okay.
Okay, thank you. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Sung before we go back to the applicant?
Not too much. Just I want to know how to deal with this one.
Okay, no, I was asking the committee members if they had any questions for you before we move on. So we know you were a little concerned with the size, but like I said, it's not really affecting you?
No.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Ms. John, I don't know if you need to respond to the gentleman who lives across the street, because this is all being built in the rear or on the side.
Yes, I'd just like to... can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'd just like to add that this is not going to be a living space. The family has three kids learning from home, and it's just some extra space that they need to put away things, especially during these times, and also safety concerns, because one of these kids is a special, special needs kid, and that's the reason why they're doing it. And also, both the neighbors, the immediate neighbors, have been approached, and they are in favor of it. If you need something in writing, we can get that too.
Okay, thank you, Ms. John. Committee members, any last questions for either party, or is someone ready to bring a motion?
I'm prepared to bring a motion to approve this various requests, subject to the conditions from planning. I feel it meets the conditions of the four tests.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Riddick. Second for Ms. Riddick's motion. Ms. Alderson, thank you. All in favor? Okay, the application is approved unanimously. Thank you. Okay, item number three is 9 Appleby Road. It's an application to construct a new detached dwelling with an attached garage, a new swimming pool, and a new ancillary structure cabana in the rear yard. There are six variances. Number one, Appleby is a... seven, Appleby is opposed regarding variances one and four, and they have a suggested condition of approval that I'm not sure we can actually impose. And then in the additional materials, we did receive a petition and support. We have two speakers registered to speak on this matter. John Sebenic, the agent, and then the neighbor, Mr. King at 7 Appleby, who had written in with the letter of opposition. Okay, is John Sebenic there?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning. So we have six variances. We do have someone here in opposition, and we do have the letter. So I don't know if you'd like to make... give a... make a short presentation?
Absolutely. I would like to do that right now.
Okay.
In reference to the south neighbor's objection letter, dealing with variance number one, proximity of the side yard setback to the south deck, proposed four meters, required 7.5. I understand the request for... with providing privacy. We appreciate the neighbor's recommendation of 5.5 meters, although this will not be necessary, because we have undertaken an extensive landscape proposal for the entire property, which will provide privacy for all neighbors. The proposed plan, beginning at the deck along the east property line, consists of 11 30-millimeter caliper European beech trees at four-foot intervals up to the service berry cluster, followed by another eight European beech trees to the lone service berry at the corner of the south property line. The height of the European beech tree ranges from 15 to 20 feet. We recognize at the moment there is insufficient planning to create the privacy needed. With a total of 228 plants proposed along the side and rear property lines in order to provide privacy for all neighbors and the owner of this property, this will be rectified and benefit everyone. As well, we are proposing a privacy screen along the south edge of the south deck for additional privacy purposes if needed. And we're also... we can also upgrade the 11 trees on the side of the deck to the service berry cluster with 70-millimeter to create a denser wall of planting. And in terms of the variance number two, the deck depth is only 0.22 of a meter beyond the maximum allowed. In reference to variance number three, which is the soffit height, proposed is 6.95, required 6.5, and variance number four, which pertains to the root with proposed 1.4, required 0.9. My response is the sanitary inward at the front property line implements the basement floor elevation. In order to provide positive slope to the invert without pumping, the basement floor is required to be set at a geodetic elevation of 137.62, which is what is shown on the drawings at the moment. Although the basement floor is raised to comply with the required sanitary slope, the first floor elevation of the proposed dwelling is almost one meter below the south neighbor's first floor. The difference between the proposed and the required soffit height is 0.45 of a meter. Although the roof overhang is 0.45 greater than allowed, the roof slope is relatively shallow and with less vertical massing, and therefore less imposing. The soffit finish provides an attractive accent to the dwelling. As for the drainage, the width of the overhang does not impact the drainage between the buildings. As a matter of fact, the three-meter setback of the proposed dwelling is greater than the 1.36-meter setback of the existing dwelling. This results in better drainage between properties. The lock grading plan was also prepared by a lock grading engineer in accordance to the drainage requirements and will be submitted during the building permit application. Variance number two, the north deck. Encroachment of the north deck is 0.79 meters into the side yard setback, and although it exceeds the 2.5 maximum depth, it does not extend beyond the rear wall of the dwelling, which results in an attractive alignment. Variants five and six, cabana floor area and cabana plumbing. With respect to the extra seven square meters of floor area and plumbing requirement of the building, the variances provide a convenient for the pool and enjoyable use of the large rear yard and avoid a future minor variance. With respect to the neighborhood support, 12 neighbors from 11 houses signed the petition presented by the owner. We understand the urban forestry petition. We've already applied to urban forestry, an application, winter and renew trees, an arborist report, and a landscape replanting plan. In closing, the variances reflect a long-term ambitions with... of the owners and their careful approach not to impact the neighbors in any negative way and avoid future minor variances. Their goal is to remain in the community for many years and to be good neighbors. Please do address any comments and provide a response to your question.
Awesome. That was exactly five minutes to the second. But you couldn't do that again. Okay, so we're going to move over to Mr. King, and just to point out to Mr. King, I mentioned in the outset that he had some suggestion condition, and that was with respect to saying that, you know, once the application is done, that there shall be no further changes, which I don't believe we can impose. You know, the... any applicant can bring an application for anything, and the city is bound to accept that. So they said that when it's finalized and approved, that there are no changes that will be permitted during construction to these plans that will require additional variances through... throughout or at the completion of the building process. I don't believe that's within our authority to determine, Mr. King. So having said that, good morning.
Good morning. My name is... Mr. Chairman and committee, my name is Doug King. As correctly pointed out, I'm the neighbor to the south, live at 7 Appleby Road. I'll keep this short. I am only contest... not contesting, had suggestions for two of the variances of the six that the gentleman went through.
Correct.
I... as well, I acknowledge the letters of support that my neighbors signed, many who I know, which makes sense to me, because as in my letter, I don't oppose having a house there, a new home. I don't oppose having a pool, nor do I oppose having the cabana. So like my neighbors, I don't oppose construction of such. These issues that I raised are specific to my situation as being the neighbor on the south side. Hearing what the gentleman said with respect to the drainage issue, I'm going to accept that we will maintain the drainage appropriately on the south side of my house, because the drainage does run right between the homes. So given that technical explanation he had, I am going to accept that variance number four will be suitably dealt with. I raised the concern about variance one, which I still have, given that he set out such a plan with landscaping. How do I, as the neighbor, and having lived through this before, sir, with other development... with other development in the neighborhood, how am I going to be satisfied that such landscaping will be undertaken and will be suitable? And so that's, that's why I suggested, in all good faith, which I did say to the neighbor as well, the, the smaller setback then is required.
Okay. So your concern is with variance one in terms of the setback?
Correct.
Okay.
I removed variance four concern, I had given what was just discussed.
Yes, okay. Committee members, any questions for Mr. King? Okay, none. Okay, so let's go back to Mr. Sabenek, the agent.
I think, uh, concerned. The planting plan has been submitted to urban forestry, the replanting plan, and it's pretty extensive along the south property line. It basically starts from the rear wall of the 17 meter point and it continues all the way to the rear lot line. These beech trees are quite, it's like a living wall. I don't think there's anything nicer than having a wall that is a natural feature of the property that it provides the, the separation, I think even better than a setback could, a required setback, in my opinion, because it's something that benefits both neighbors. There's privacy maintained, you've got, you know, good neighborly features. These trees mature. Right now, they're about, they would be about 15 feet tall. They could go up to 20, but if we change the caliber to three, three inch or 75, 70 millimeter, it creates even a denser wall. So it, the beauty is there. And, and as I said, we've submitted these documents to urban forestry and we've already paid the fees for the permit. So I think we're, we're quite thorough with our, you know, our landscaping and being, doing the neighborly thing to create the privacy that we're requesting.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the agent or is someone ready to weigh in with a motion?
I have a question. Are you aware of urban forestry condition number two?
I'm aware of all three of them. And we've already applied and submitted the required documents. So we're aware of the, the three conditions.
Okay, that being said, I'm prepared to put forward a motion to approve the variances as laid out. I believe they meet the four tests and happy to do so.
And subject to urban forestry.
Urban, sorry, urban forestry condition number two.
Thank you, Ms. Alderson. Seconded from Ms. Alderson's motion. Ms. Reddick, all in favor? The application is unanimously approved, thank you. Thank you, neighbor.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Next application is item number four, 80 Thorncrest Road. This is to construct a new detached dwelling with an attached garage. We have three variances before us. We have a cover letter, arborist report. Transportation has conditions of approval and we have support from, or no objection from the neighbor at 78 right next door. And registered to speak is the agent, Ian McDonald. And oh yes, just members, I didn't keep track of the urban forestry. If you can alert me if there's urban forestry on any of these applications. Mr. McDonald, now welcome.
Thank you. I'll try and keep this brief, it's pretty straightforward. I don't know, is it possible to use visual references on this presentation?
For sure, if you'd like your presentation materials up on the board or?
If we could put drawing 002, which is the site plan, I think that would be sufficient.
Okay. Perhaps we can get that up on the board, I have that on my computer screen before me.
Okay, that's wonderful.
Yeah.
Can I, can you see my pointer moving around on here? No, so I don't know. Okay.
Yeah.
On the bottom of, of the sheet here is, is Kipling Avenue. It's a north-south street and this house is on Kipling, which is very busy. We're trying to design a house that will cope to some degree with the, the busyness of that arterial road. So along the, the west wall, you'll see these extensions out each side. I wish I could point to these things, but they're along the setback line from Kipling. That's a sound wall and we're trying to create spaces that are defensible outdoors that are away from the noisy arterial road, which accounts for much of the configuration of this building as you see it. We have three variances. I can go back to the idea of the, in questions if there are any, but the three variances we have, number one, the front yard setback. We are reusing the existing or proposing to reuse the existing garage here. That garage has been here for, since 1957. It is, it is setback to the, you know, level that it was required to be setback in the original house. So it's an existing non-conforming, we're just reusing it. The only person this could possibly affect is the adjacent neighbor at 78 and we have a letter of support from those people, Ken and Dale Killdoor, which is in our package. Item number two is the width of the driveway. Just to, for safety, we thought it would be helpful if when you back out of the driveway, there'd be a hammerhead turnaround space and then you could go back out. The actual.
First of all, sir, so I don't know if you have to go through that all, but the trend, you're okay with the transportation condition that they're requesting?
Yes, we are, we have to re, restore the curb cut on, on Kipling, yes.
Okay. Okay, so let's just see if committee members have any questions for you. There's no one else here in opposition and you have the next neighbor in support. Anyone have any questions for Mr. McDonald or is someone ready to bring a motion? Mr. Taylor?
Yes, just a question. Sir, are you aware of urban forestry condition number two?
We, we, we had our arborist report done and we're, we're replanting and we've got that in line, I think. I'm not, I don't have the document in front of me, I don't know which one number two is precisely.
That's with respect to a private tree.
What specifically?
Okay, I'll read it.
Thank you.
Just pulling it up here. Submission of a complete application for a permit to injure or remove a privately owned tree as per City of Toronto Municipal Code Chapter 813, three articles, three, private tree protection. So I guess your, your arborist's work is perhaps lending itself toward that, but this is a formal requirement for a formal submission of an application for a permit to urban forestry.
Yes, we'll be doing that.
Okay.
We'll meet every requirement of urban forestry, that's, that's.
Okay. Well, on basis, Mr. Chairman, prepared to move for approval, subject to urban forestry condition two and the condition requested by transportation.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Taylor. Seconded with that motion, Mr. Palmer?
I'll second.
All in favor? Unanimous approval, thank you, Mr. McDonald.
Thanks very much.
Okay. Okay, moving on to item number five, 44 13th Street. This is an application to construct a second story addition above the existing dwelling and a new rear yard deck. There are two variances, we have presentation materials from the applicant. We have two, two supports, 43 13th and 42 13th. And we have opposition from 46 and 48 13th Street. They're concerned with drainage issues, burdenly treatments. It's apparently used as a migration, the adjacent parks used as a migration route. And that's, I'm not sure if there's anything for urban forestry, the members can advise. And we have registered to speak quite a number of neighbors. We have the applicant is, agent is Graham Barrett. And then we have the neighbors from 48, 52 and 46, which is right next door, registered to speak on this. And we do have letters, as I said, from 46 and 48, who are two of the speakers. So, Mr. Barrett?
Good morning, committee members, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning.
I sent in some presentation materials, if that could be put up on screen, I'd appreciate it.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, I'm not sure why that looks like that, but I'll do my best. So yes, I'm Graham Barrett, agent for the owners of 44 13th Street. And the existing, there we go, the existing home is visible on the first slide in a tasteful black and white, apparently. I'm here to request two minor variances from the zoning bylaw in order to commit construction of a second story addition in a rear deck, which is visible on the next slide. The title page for the plans, thank you. This home will also extend out slightly at the rear, although no variances are required for building length, depth or coverage. The variance for floor space index, 0.78 proposed, 0.6 maximum, is comparable to other recent approvals in the immediate area. We've seen variances approved on 13th Street at number 43 and 47 at 0.74 and 0.72 respectively. Comparable variances on 9th, 15th, 11th and so on, up into the low 80s. The variance for front and rear exterior wall heights is also quite minor and a little bit confusing. This application was submitted under a zoning review waiver, but a proper zoning notice from a previous iteration of the plans was used for reference. If you go ahead to some of the elevations, you can see where this measurement is taken. It's to the dormers on the sides of the home. But changes were made to eliminate variances for rear yard soft landscaping and the area of the second floor platform. And so the numbers on the waiver, we're confident are correct. I think it's also important to note that this home will comply with the zoning bylaw in terms of overall height, not to mention all setbacks. We have no comments from cleaning staff indicating they have concerns. I did make an effort to reach out to them to discuss this proposal on several occasions, but I didn't hear back, so I take their silence as support. We do have a forestry condition pertaining to a city tree in the front. The designer has been in contact with them. The city trees in the front can and will be protected and we're fine with any conditions. These variances are quite minor in nature in the context of this neighborhood, which is comprised of a variety of built form, from bungalows to newer larger dwellings, including a new two-story dwelling currently under construction across the street. So I've included some photos, you want to skip ahead? The first picture is the view looking north from the rear yard and I'll just wait till you get there. So this is the view looking north from the rear yard. You can see there are other larger, deeper two-story dwellings. The next picture is the view looking south with a similar situation. The next picture is the new house across the street, which is comparable in scale and massing to our proposal and many other new builds in the immediate area. And the next few pictures are other two-story, two and a half story dwellings and a small apartment building along the stretch of 13th. As you mentioned, I've submitted letters of support from the adjacent neighbor at 42 13th and the neighbor across the street at 43. I'm aware of the two letters of opposition which were sent in and I'll address the points raised by the neighbors after they've had a chance to speak. However, the owner has advised me that he's been in contact with these neighbors and has shown them the plans and discussed them quite some time ago. And he was under the impression that at least the neighbor at 48 13th had no concerns. These letters, which were posted on the AIC on April 23rd and dated April 22nd, came as quite a surprise to him. Now, I believe this proposal passes the four tests and it will allow for a tasteful and suitable update to this existing dwelling and the neighborhood as a whole. This application will allow for reasonably sized, single-family dwelling for the owners and their two children, who have recently been accepted at the school across the park. And this will allow them to stay in the area rather than moving to a larger dwelling elsewhere that could accommodate their family. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have and thank you for your time.
We thank you, Mr. Barrett. Any questions for Mr. Barrett before we move on to the next speaker? Okay, so the first speaker is Alan Volk of 48 13th Street. It's one of the parties who's written in a letter of opposition. Mr. Volk?
Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
Hi, good morning. I wouldn't call my letter a letter of opposition. I have spoken with the owner of the property, but you know, in spite of that, we still have some concerns that he didn't really address. The biggest concern, I think, around here is to do with the drainage. It's a very, number 44 is a very level backyard and so there's quite a large addition coming into the backyard. And I'd just like to know how the, what the plan is to get the water out of here because the existing house, I know, does have drainage problems already, has had drainage problems in the past. And we have, as well as my neighbor at 46, have gone to great lengths to waterproof our basements and put in new sanitary sewer lines with a backflow valves and we want to make sure that, that we're protected and that the water is discharged properly from that property. And he's also, he also spoke to me, the owner of 44 spoke to me regarding putting a grad in the front, which he, not really indicated on the plan, but he assured me that he'd be, he'd be able to put a driveway in there without a negative slope. But I've done some measurements there myself and I'm not really sure how that's possible. So I'd like the, the agent to talk about whether there even will be a grad or how, how that will be accomplished. And the site plan indicates that the rear addition extends well beyond the, there's a frame deck at number 46 13th Street, my neighbor. The measurements he gave me said that his addition would not extend past that deck. So I don't know if we can get a confirmation of how far beyond that frame deck at 46, the rear addition will be pushing. So those are my concerns. It's not, I'm not opposed to them building a second story addition, but we need to deal with the water around here, we're very close to the lake and close to the very beautiful park here that, you know, we'd like to maintain our, our view into it if we can have some kind of a compromise at the back because that will be kind of imposing. We both have original bungalows here and that will be imposing quite a bit into our backyard space.
Okay, yeah, I see in your letter you talk about, uh, where is it? Yeah, I talk about the negative slope and you talk about perhaps 12 to 18 inches cutting back the addition or I don't know if you had any discussion with, with your neighbor about that. Any questions for Mr. Volk before we move on to the next speaker, committee member? Okay, so the next speaker is Douglas Nixon at 52 13th.
Mr. Chairman, Douglas Nixon is on the call.
Yeah, hello, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hello?
Yep.
Okay, sorry, thanks very much for your time. Yeah, I, I sent in some pictures of what's going on there now and I don't know if we could bring them up and take a look at them?
Do we have any pictures from the neighbor at 52? I don't seem to. Or something in the additional materials or? We have the opposition. From 46.
I said that you had them. I thought they'd be admissible. No pictures?
We're just trying to locate them because I guess, I don't know if they, were they part of the additional materials we received last minute? No. Again, anyway, so you're on the other side of the neighbor, I guess, at 50. We just heard from Mr. Volk, you're further afield, you're a couple of doors away.
Yeah, I, well, my concern is, is that there's construction going on there right now. And the house has basically been half demolished and the basement's been dug out. And there must have been 10 to 15 bins already extracting material. So that's, that's a concern for me and I submitted pictures into that regard. Also, my, my concern again is with the water. And, and basically. And, uh, and basically, uh, the fact that construction's going on prior to any permit being delivered.
Okay, we'll hear back from the applicant on that. Sometimes what happens is they get started based on what's not approved, like what they could build as a right. Uh, but we'll hear from, uh, Mr. Barrett about that. Okay, Mr. Nixon? Okay, Mr. Nixon, grab the pictures up.
Okay, maybe flash a few of them, let's, uh, I'm concerned about the structure and the safety of it. It looks like it's been compromised, the roof.
Uh, in any event, just, could you have any concerns with the ultimate built form? Because, you know, we, we don't deal with construction issues. We're going to hear what, you know, they got a court order or, you know, is this, did they get a demolition permit or whatever else they're doing? But what about, we deal with planning issues, so other than the, the water and the birds and? Do you have any other concerns, uh, with what's proposed?
Basically, I'm concerned that the garage is, uh, is, is, will be lower than the, uh, lower than the street and the grade will be going in the house. So that's, that's my concern too. So that, that's my other concern, other than, uh, other than the water.
Okay, so we'll hear back from, uh, the applicant on those questions, which, uh, the other neighbor's also about the, uh, the slope of the driveway. Uh, so, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Nixon? Okay, so let's, the next neighbor, last neighbor to speak is the one right next door at forty-six, Philip Fernandez. And we have a letter from Mr. Fernandez as well.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning, committee. Good morning. Um, appreciate a chance to speak to the committee. The first thing I want to say is that the committee should know that the plan, the, the applicant did not speak to us at all before the plans were submitted. It comes as a big surprise to me that the agent talks about the fact that the applicant is surprised. We were surprised. Uh, particularly because we got, we get along with our neighbors and we appreciate the fact that as a growing family, he needs the space. We are seniors that live next door to the north. We have been living in our dwelling for the last twenty years. Uh, earlier on, in the year that we moved in, there was a flood, and we went to great expense to have the basement where we live, that's where our bedrooms are, waterproofed. Um, our biggest concern is on the drainage front. Um, we want to make sure that any compromise that causes any kind of water seepage because, seepage, because these dwellings were built in the, in the depression, and they're frail. You know, they're almost a hundred years old. We are, we will be on fixed incomes. I certainly am on a fixed income right now. And, um, we are, we need to have some assurances, which we have not received from our neighbor, that there's not going to be any damage to our basement that's going to cause water seepage and so forth on the basis of this build. Uh, our other neighbors have talked about the, the driveway and the, and the proposed garage, which doesn't seem to be on the planning. Um, um, the slopage and, and we are opposed to the, uh, any negative slope driveway or improvised weeping tile connection to the sanitary sewer, um, at forty-four thirteenth street. Um, so those are our main concerns. Um, the, the other thing is that we, we have been growing vegetables in the garden uh, for the last fifteen years for our own benefit. And, um, the height of the building is certainly going to affect the, um, the garden. Um, we would have appreciated before this had gone forward if our neighbor had actually talked to us. Um, the only interaction we have had on this matter is that we had gone to him. Um, and he gave us a lot of verbal assurances about the drainage and everything else. And given the fact that he had gone ahead, um, to our disappointment and presented all this, uh, for approval, but even talking to us, we are, we, we need some assurances as seniors that this is not going to cause us trouble down the road. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fernandez. Uh, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Fernandez before we go back to Mr. Barrett for his rebuttal?
I have a quick question for Mr. Fernandez. Uh, are, uh, sir, are you at number forty-six?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so you don't technically share a driveway with the applicant?
We technically do not share, share a driveway with the applicant. That's correct.
But you are fairly close to the applicant in terms of, uh, the, uh,
I think, yes, I think there's less than, I would say that between our walls, there's about maybe four feet, maybe less.
All right, thank you.
Okay, uh, any other questions, or let's move back to Mr. Barrett to respond to the concerns of the neighbors?
Thank you, committee members, Mr. Chair. Um, and thanks to the neighbors for voicing their concerns. Um, I appreciate them. Um, to address some of the things that have been raised, um, drainage is, um, not really an issue for a committee. Um, but of course, the owner of forty-four thirteenth will build responsibly and ensure that water is managed appropriately on his site. Um, he's also the designer, um, and has been building homes for many, many years, since he was old enough to swing a hammer. So he knows what he's doing and will do this professionally and, uh, and of course, be courteous of his neighbors. Um, as far as issues about the garage, the garage has always been shown on the plans. It's an integral garage. It is not a negative slope driveway. Um, I believe it's a two percent slope down to the street. So I'm not sure why these concerns are being raised as, um, it's, it's always been there. It's not a negative slope. Um, let's see, some concerns were raised about what has been going on so far on the site. The owner is eager to get this build done before the winter and minimize the inconvenience to his neighbors and has begun some light demolition, removing drywall, things of that sort. Um, I've been advised that nothing that has been done thus far requires a permit. So that is that. Um, as for the compromise that was mentioned to reduce this building depth or length by twelve to eighteen inches, um, this was only brought to our attention in the letters of opposition, which were, as I said, sent in um, at the absolute last minute for material submission. So really no time to discuss or revise if such compromise, um, was something the owner was open to. Uh, it could have been raised quite some time ago. Um, I'm not even sure how a reduction of twelve inches, uh, in building length would create any significant improvement for these neighbors' views or their enjoyment of their properties as they all back onto the park. Um, this isn't really going to block any direct view out of the rear of anybody's home into this large green space. Uh, the difference would be negligible. Um, the owner is also, as I mentioned, the designer, and he did consider his neighbors when designing this home, using a slope-proof design, um, at the rear, particularly the entire home, in order to improve sunlight and, um, and shading conditions, rather than squaring off the home and building a flat-roof dwelling, which would have provided more headroom and usable space on the second floor for his family. Um, again, we've covered drainage, not a negative slope driveway. Um, there were some concerns about the birds, but, uh, the owner is actually, uh, becoming quite a budding birder and very interested in all the bird species that live behind him. And he has a desire to impact any migratory pathways or, or harm any, any bird species, of course. So, um, hopefully I've addressed all the points that were raised. If you have any additional questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I just note that, um, sometimes when we see, uh, sometimes, I guess it's TRCA or, uh, or planning recommending bird-friendly treatments when there's, uh, uh, you know, on, on, uh, on parks and things of that nature. Are you planning on using those bird-friendly treatments, uh, given your, your client is now a, interested in the?
Um, I'm, uh, I'm, I'm not aware of any bird-friendly treatments at this time, but I can certainly recommend it to him, and I'm sure he'd be open to it.
Okay. Okay, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Barrett? Before we take it into committee for, uh, a motion and, and a decision? And for that matter, anyone have any follow-up questions for any of the neighbors? Okay, so, um, I guess we're ready for a motion. And, uh, there is urban forestry condition number two, I believe. Number one? Mr. Palmer?
I'll, uh, yeah, I'll move for approval. I've, uh, reviewed the variances. They appear minor in nature and meet the four tests in the Planning Act. Uh, we've got a, a later application dealing with a as-built situation for a reverse slope driveway. So we're quite sensitive to this. I've had a look at the plans. It appears from the plans and the grades on there. I'm not an engineer. It looks like the grades are positive sloping towards the road. So, uh, we're sensitive to that, and that would have been something reviewed by staff. So, uh, I think we're fairly positive that there's no reverse slope driveway on this proposal. So I move for approval, subject to urban forestry condition number one.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. You have a second here for that.
And I'm happy, I'm happy to second that motion.
Okay, all in favor? Of unanimous approval? Thank you, Mr. Barrett.
Thank you very much. Have a nice day.
Thank you. Okay, our next item is item number six seventy-four Cronin Drive. It's an application to construct a two-story south-sided addition, which will include an attached garage and a second-story addition above the existing dwelling. And there are, uh, seven variances. We have a cover letter, um, setting out revisions to the initial plans, March twenty-six. We have transportation, uh, with no objection. And we have a planning report for information pointing out that it's a corner lot, which results in some of these variances. Uh, we only have one speaker on this application, Eddie Perez, the agent.
Hello, uh, good morning, Chairman, committee members. This is Eddie. How are you doing today?
We're good. Um, I don't know if we need a, a wholesome presentation. We have your cover letter, um, and you're aware of the planning condition?
Yes, I only have, uh, one comment to make, um. As for our cover letter, we, we were supposed to have a variance for balconies, but it didn't get, he, he didn't get mailed out with the balcony sizes. If you look at the second-floor plan, we had a balcony that was nine-point-eight meters, another one was nine-point-six. And we sent that to planning as well, and they were okay with it. And, but they didn't send it in the notice. I just realized that. I just thought I'd mention that to you.
So there is no, there is no variances here for, uh, platform sizes?
No.
So they're missing variances because you're saying you do have two oversized rear platform? Is it rear platforms, front platforms? Doesn't matter?
If you look at the second-floor plan, they were missed.
Okay, so I guess.
It's on the cover letter as well.
Like we're going to have to defer?
No, I don't want to defer. I'll, 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 I'll make them four square meters because we need to get this project going. But I just thought I'd let you know that, uh, they, they were missing.
And you didn't notice this when you got your, uh, you know, you were to receive the list of?
I know, except after. There wasn't enough time to mail the letters out again, so, but I thought I'd let you know. But we're, we're, we can move forward to get it approved without that for now.
Mr. Chair, uh, I would suggest that Mr. Perez give me a call tomorrow, and we'll try to remedy the situation.
Okay, you hear that, Mr. Perez, Mr. Carvelino, perhaps? I don't know if, perhaps you can, you know, I know you want to get started, and maybe if it's important to come back with a second applicant. Anyway, you can discuss with Mr. Carvelino tomorrow.
Can we get, can we get it?
Well, we'll talk.
Can we get the variances before us approved today, please?
Yeah, so we'll just deal with the variances before us today, obviously. Okay, so there is no, uh, there's no concern. I guess you have, transportation is okay, and then, uh, you know, we have that report for information, so planning is okay as well. Let's just see if anyone has any questions for you on what's before us today with respect to these variances that you wish to have approved. Any questions for Mr. Perez? And if not, can we, uh, have a motion with respect to what's before us? Mr. Taylor?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm prepared to make a motion, but just one question. Is the applicant aware of and okay with urban forestry condition two?
Yeah, I'm okay with it. I, I read it and we're fine with it. Thank you.
Okay, I find the, uh, variances requested meet the four tests under the Planning Act, and I move for approval, subject to urban forestry condition two.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Taylor. Second here for Mr. Taylor's motion.
I can second that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Alderson. All in favor? Unanimous approval, Mr. Perez?
Okay, thank you. Have a nice day.
Okay, you too. Okay, the next application is item number seven fifty-one Wheatfield. And, uh, this is an application, uh, to enclose the existing front porch and construct a new covered front porch. There are two variances, and we have, uh, absolutely nothing, uh, on, uh, on this application. In the additional materials, we did get a letter of no objection from forty-nine forty-seven A Dundas Street West. So other than that, we have nothing on file on this application. And we only have, uh, the owner, Sasha Schwertfeger, registered to speak.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm Sasha Schwertfeger, just in case there are any questions or anything, but, uh, I don't foresee any issues.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, we don't need a presentation very straightforward, so, uh, committee members, any questions for the applicant, uh, or someone ready to make a motion? And I don't know if there's anything to do with urban forestry, but other than that, there's no conditions noted.
There's no urban forestry condition, so I'm prepared to make a motion to accept this variance application. I find it to be minor in nature and consistent with the four principles in the Planning Act.
Thank you, Ms. Reddick. Second here for that motion, Ms. Alderson.
And I'd be happy to second that. I think the neighbor has done this extremely, extremely well, uh, number fifty-three. So I'm sure they're going to be doing very similar thing there.
Okay, thank you. All in favor? Unanimous approval. Thank you, Mr. Schwertfeger. Have a good day.
You do.
Okay. Uh, next application is item number eight. And that is fifth five seventy-eight Rustic Road. We have a revised, uh, yellow highlighted notice sheet with a, as a waiver, showing some changes to the, uh, application, quite a number of them. Uh, the depth, the length, the flat root height, uh, and the height have all been reduced, as well as the finished floor height. And then the variance number seven has been deleted, uh, as well as items twelve and thirteen. So we now have, ten variances. We had thirteen, less the three. Um, we have, those way, we have an applicant submission, transportation has conditions of approval, uh, fires forestry, which is, uh, a denial, or alternatively, an application to injure a tree. And registered to speak on this application is Mehdi Hosseini, uh, the agent, and, uh, no one else.
Good morning, sir. Uh, good morning, members. Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, maybe just speak a little bit louder?
Sure, um, so the, the, uh, the project that you have in front of you, it's a corner lot, uh, which is facing Rustic Avenue in the front. And, uh, as we see after, uh, we had a lot of discussion with the planning, uh, department, we made, uh, several changes to reduce the number of the variances that we had and reduce the number of the, of the depth, length, and, uh, and the height of the building. Um, and the reason for this variances that we have here, uh, is because of the shape of this property. Uh, is that possible if we can see the, the drawing that they sent as a reference, the site plan?
You want your, uh, your submission up on the, on the wall showing your, uh?
Yes.
Your plans?
I can point out, uh, the reason for, yes, here you go. So, as you can see, um, there, uh, we have a line that shows where the front, uh, front yard setback, the required front yard setbacks, uh, considered. And it's, uh, this line of variances that we have mostly are technical, especially for the building length. This, the length of the building is actually, uh, so much less than the, that number. Uh, the reason that the measuring gets this way is from the midpoint of the, of the lot, they creating a line that goes in the middle of the building, and then that's going to be the depth. That's why we have that number. Otherwise, the actual building size is so much less than that. And in regards to the building, um, building height, uh, that my client wanted to have a modern-looking house, which is the flat roof, uh, facade and, uh, with the flat roof on top. And we understand that the building height required is eight meters. And considering that they wanted to have a regular standard nowadays, a standard floor heights for the first floor and second floor, so that's why we ended up to getting nine point two seven meters for the height. If there is any questions, I would, I would go through them, you know, if there is any questions regarding this line of variances.
Okay, so there's no other speakers here. We do see the extent you did change. You've eliminated some variances. You've reduced other variances. You're aware of the transportation condition of approval. There's the forestry. I take it you're gonna have to make an application to injure a tree?
Yes.
If it gets approved. And so let's see if committee members have any further questions for you, if someone's ready to make a motion. Mr. Taylor?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I find the requested variances meet the four tests under the Planning Act, and I move for approval, subject to urban forestry condition one and the transportation department conditions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Taylor. Seconded for that motion. Mr. Palmer, all in favor? You have unanimous approval.
Thank you so much. Have a good day.
Thank you. Okay. Next application is item number nine. It is forty-two Wickford Drive. It's an application for a second-story addition over the existing dwelling, a two-story rear addition and a new front porch. There are three variances. We have an Arbers report. We have a planning report from, for information advising that the basement is interpreted as a full story. Under the zoning bylaw, but they said dwelling will read as a second, as a, as a two-story or second story from street level, maintaining the prevailing character of the area. We have four letters of support, one letter of opposition. Number forty is opposed. They're concerned with the construction and landscaping related issues, it sounds like. And in the additional materials, we have a survey and photos being supplied by the neighbor at number forty Wickstede, Wickford to support his submissions in his original letter. Okay, and registered to speak on this application is the owner, Martin Schultz, as well as and the neighbor at forty Wickford. Okay, is Mr. Schultz there?
Yes, Martin, I'm here.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
You're the, oh yeah, it says the owner here is Integrated Property Holdings, and I guess you're a principal of Integrated Property Holdings.
Yeah, it's just four brother-in-laws.
Yep, okay. So perhaps you can give us just a brief addition, a brief addition, brief presentation with respect to your proposed additions. I see, I see, I assume you've seen the, the objection letter from your neighbor.
Yep. So we've, it, it's very simple. We're just doing a second story going up. We're not changing the footprint of the first floor or the basement. The second floor will go back out towards the rear. The garage is not being touched, so there's no other variances. The, the only variances seem to come from the height. We're gonna do a modern house with a flat roof, and because the grade of the property, these variances sort of come up. We did speak to a lot of the other members around their neighbors, and we have support from basically everyone. The only neighbor to our right, who I think is going to speak today, we have spoken to him a few times, and the concerns don't seem to be to do with the variance, but more so just with the vegetation that was overgrown from the prior owner,
Yes.
which the idea is to, you know, reduce as much as we can, you know, within reason and obviously following the Arbers report.
Yeah, and there's obviously.
I don't think there's anything crazy.
There seems to be some construction related, which we really don't, you know, deal with. Dealing with the fence and the construction work, nailed debris, that's something we don't really deal with, construction-related. We do have, I did mention at the outset, you have four letters of support from thirty-seven forty-six and forty-four and from forty-nine Gracefield, I believe it is. So.
That's the rear neighbor, yeah.
Does anyone have any questions for the, the owner before we move over to listen to the neighbor, and he'll obviously have a chance to respond? At this point, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Schultz? Okay, so let's hear from either Eric or Stephanie Angelini, the owners of forty Wickford.
Can you hear us?
Yes.
Hello, can you hear me clearly?
Yes, very clear.
Okay, my name's Eric Angelini, the, the owner at forty Wickford Drive. And my wife and I submitted the letter, not so much to be a letter of objection, but rather just to put a few matters on the record so that they could be dealt with sooner rather than later before construction got going. We fundamentally do support our neighbors and their plans to improve the property, and we certainly hope that the improvements they make are both aesthetically pleasing and do, do justice to the, the available land that they have around their proposed property. The only issues I really had, and the reason the pictures were submitted, was to show that there is an inconsistency in the survey that they submit. And it, and this is an opportunity to get some of these inconsistencies resolved. If you want to quickly, now there's a picture that shows what on the survey is supposed to be a chain-link fence. And clearly, what we have here is, for lack of a better way of describing it, a fence made up of old boards of wood. Not so much a board fence as just a fence made up of old dilapidated boards. Now, if you go to one of the other pictures, you'll see that there is sort of a weird, okay, that's sort of in the same area. You'll also see some of the brush on the left side of that picture, which we're asking while they're at it to, to clean up and to, and perhaps re-landscape. I'm sure they have some plans that they'd certainly like to hear Mr. Schultz sort of put on the record, which I'm sure will be a great improvement. Now, what you're looking at here is looking towards Wickford Drive. And you can see on the left, a board fence that is on our property, and it should be entirely on our property. It was very carefully laid out when it was planted many decades ago. And then immediately to the right of it, you see what looks like old posts put into a ground with boards of wood nailed to it. That could be the board fence that's referred to in the survey, and I'll ask to go to the survey in just a moment. But you also see again overbrush and overgrowth there of old dying and decaying brush, which hopefully can be replaced with something with sod or other landscaping that's a lot more aesthetically pleasing and doesn't give yellow jacket hornets and wash mess a, an easy place to, to develop during the summer months, which would cause problems and danger to both properties, actually. Now, as you go to the, you see there, the, on the, on the, if you can just scan back up a little bit, you see on the left there the end of the board fence on our property, and then the board, the fence of boards that's on the property at forty-two. I'm assuming that that is going to be taken down. It was put up sort of haphazardly by the former owner of forty-two Wickford many decades ago for reasons that are still not clear. But regardless of that, it's an eyesore and probably not in keeping with the, the great improvements that they want to make at forty-two Wickford. And if there's one more picture that actually shows the end of a chain-linked fence that's sort of sandwiched between the, the proper board fence on the left and the haphazard, let's call it, fence of boards on the, on the right. There's, if you scroll back to the pictures, there's one that clearly shows an end of a chain-linked fence that was running between these fences, if you will, and that, I think, just would naturally have to be extended back to what you see there, which is the rear of both forty-two and forty Wickford. There, there should have been one more picture that showed, anyway. If you keep going along, as you go down, there should have been one more picture that showed the, the chain-linked fence. But hold it on that picture. If you imagine the board fence on the left, the board, the fence of boards, we'll call it, on the right, down below and sandwiched between there is the remnants of a chain, or it's still there, a chain-linked fence that, according to the survey, was supposed to go all the way to the back of the, of the lot. Maybe just if we could hear from Mr. Schultz and just put it on the record that you're prepared to just make the survey a reality and then just extend that fence to the back. I don't know how that fits into your landscaping plans, but obviously, let's chat about it and try to figure something out.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Angelini, for those comments. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Angelini, but before we move on to Mr. Schultz for a rebuttal to those comments? Okay, so Mr. Schultz?
So I mean, I, we have plans to obviously make the backyard much nicer. It was overgrown from the prior owner, and there's, you know, obviously fences and stuff like that that are not, you know, up to snuff, and the idea would be to improve it. And whether we do a chain-linked fence, as Eric was pointing out, or we do a wood fence, we haven't quite decided yet. But the idea is obviously to improve and, and clean up the area. So the idea is to work with him to, you know, improve the area and, and, you know, take care of some of these concerns, but, you know, that's definitely the direction we're gonna go.
Okay, thank you. Any of the committee panel members have any questions for either the applicant or the agent, or is someone ready to weigh in with a motion? Then we do have the forestry reports. Oh, sorry, it's a different application. No, there's no forestry.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I find the requested variances meet the four tests under the Planning Act, and I move for approval without conditions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Taylor. We have a second for that motion. Ms. Alderson, all in favor? You have unanimous approval. Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Thank you, Mr. Angelini.
Thank you.
Okay, number ten has been deferred, so moving on to item number eleven. Ninety-one Guestville Avenue. It's an application to construct a new detached dwelling with an attached garage. We have two variances. We have a committee of adjustment decision in December twenty twenty, which was one variance, and it was, the application was refused. It was for the setback. So now we have a covering letter, tree declaration and tree photos, forest report, and a letter of support. And registered to speak on this application is Mr. Sean Galbraith as agent and no other speakers. Mr. Galbraith?
Good morning.
Good morning. So we have your cover, your presentation materials. So could you just, what, what happened? They were here, they went to committee. This was before committee in twenty twenty? With only one variance, and it was refused.
Correct. So the, the original, that is correct. The original application, the house was utilizing the existing south-side yard setback, which was quite small. There was a lot of opposition to that, and so it was, and it was refused, and so we have basically shifted the house north with the consent of the neighbor to the north. And we're providing the bylaw-required setback to the south.
Okay, right, because you're opposing, I think, point three-six, where one point two is required, and that was.
It was in that ballpark, yeah.
So now you've shifted it, which is, I guess, amenable to the other neighbor. Is there, there's a variance on that other side?
Yeah, exactly. But because there's a driveway in between, the, we've got a nice separation between the houses.
So it's now point four-six rather than point three-six on the other side, but you do have the fact that there's a driveway, and there's no one opposed here. What's happening?
Precisely.
Tree, lots of tree declarations and forestry reports, tree photo. And you do have a letter of support, as I mentioned.
That is correct.
Okay, committee members, any questions for Mr. Galbraith, or is someone ready for a motion?
I remember this application very well because I believe we had over twenty members from the community speaking out against it, so.
There was a lot, yes.
And now nobody, so.
Thank you very much for revising your plans and moving the house. So I'm prepared to make a motion. I believe it meets the four tests. And also with the condition, urban forestry condition number two, I believe. Number two?
Thank you, Ms. Alderson.
The sugar maple tree. Urban forestry condition number two.
Thank you. Any second for that motion? Mr. Palmer, I end up went first, and went up first before Ms. Reddick, so we'll use you as a second. All in favor? Unanimous approval. Thank you, Mr. Galbraith.
Thank you very much.
Okay, item twelve has been deferred, so we'll move on to item number thirteen, which is thirty-one Jardine Place. And this is, again, to construct a new detached dwelling with an integral garage. There is only one variance, which is building length of point six-nine. We have nothing on file on this application, no comments or concerns from the area neighbors or from city staff, although I'm not sure if there's an urban forestry or not. We have, the speaker on this application is Shiraz Kavorkian.
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, we do have a forestry condition, condition number two. Hello, Mr. Kavorkian.
Good morning.
I don't believe we need a fulsome application for you. Is there anything you'd like to, I just state your name for the record, I guess. So how are you going, building a home with only one small variance as to, as the length? Everything else complies, correct?
True, except the forestry that we are, we're aware of that.
Okay. Okay, and there's really nothing else, you know, kudos to you to design a, a new home and only have one small variance. So committee members, any questions, or is someone ready for a motion? And there is urban forestry condition number two.
I'm prepared to move a motion to accept this variance application. Find it to be minor in nature and consistent with the four principles in the Planning Act, subject to urban forestry condition number two.
Thank you, Ms. Reddick. Seconded for that. Mr. Palmer, all in favor? Unanimous approval.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Next application is item number fourteen forty-eight Norville Street. And this is an application to convert the existing attached garage to habitable space. On this application, there are two variances. We have a previ- previous committee of adjustment application where there's a severance. This lot was created two thousand and eleven pursuant to a severance. We have a planning report for info, transportation conditions of approval, and TRC advised, TRCA advises that they have no objection, but a permit from TRC is required prior to obtaining a building permit. We have a couple of speakers registered on this, Joshua Brown. I must have the right one of seven.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, members.
That's the agent as well. We have, I think, two other speakers from twenty-seven eight Terry Drive and forty-six Norville next door. So hello, Mr. Brown.
Hello, how are you guys?
We're, we're fine. We're on schedule.
Great.
Okay. So you have two variances, point eight times the lot is required. You're looking to go to one point two four times coverage. Could I just ask, and you also are deficient in a parking spot. Can I ask you what the, do you know what the floor space index is? Oh, it's a new build, so it doesn't really matter. So can you explain the reason for the very high over one times FSI coverage?
Pardon me? I'm having trouble hearing you, sorry.
Can you explain why your floor space index is high? And we do have the planning report for information. They're in favor of the application.
Okay, fantastic. I'm just having trouble, I'm having a bad connection on your end, I'm sorry.
Okay.
You're asking for me to refer to a, a certain item?
What I'm saying is that the, you have a rather large floor space index of one point two four times the area of the lot? Now. Now.
Yes, I understand. FSI is large.
Yeah, they've advised, I guess it's a small lot because they've advised that they're okay with it. They feel that the proposed conversion to habitable space is minor and maintains the prevailing character of massing and scale of dwellings in the area. So, but just before we go over to the neighbors, I just wanted to know if there's anything you'd like to add. You'll obviously have a chance to respond to any concerns raised by the neighbors. We don't know what those are because we don't have any letters from them, but we'll hear what they have to say.
Precisely. I honestly, at this point, I don't really have any input to gather other than the things that we've seen. It's a pretty straightforward project. The only difference street vision is the garage door converting into a window. Other than that, nothing else is changing. We have been approved by TRCA, like they don't have the objections. We obviously will be going to get the permit for transportation, for transportation to get the driveway stuff dealt with. Other than that, I'd love to hear what the neighbor has to say.
Yeah, and succinctly, we have the planning report that says that they feel that this fits in and there's nothing wrong with it. So let's hear from the neighbors and you'll have a chance to respond.
Thank you.
Okay, no one has any questions for Mr. Brown before we move on? Okay. Next speaker, Juan Carlos Bernal of 37A Terry Drive.
Yeah, good morning. Actually, I was just invited just to listen in. My parents live on Terry Drive and they have voiced to me mainly, their only concern would be with with construction in terms of noise and the working hours. We've had issues in the past where whenever there's construction around the house or in the area, they go beyond hours late into the night or super early in the morning, and that's pretty much it.
Yeah, committee of adjustment, we deal with the planning issues. We really don't deal with construction related issues, and obviously those questions do arise during construction. When people, they start working early or they finish late. They're making noise, they're leaving debris, and so those all are matters handled by the building department. If you have any issues, you can call 311 and speak to the, complain about that, or you can speak to your neighbor, but we don't really deal with conditions and there are standards that are required, as well you know, and with so much construction in the city, that's obviously no, good to know that you do have rights with respect to that. But you have no problem with the built form being proposed?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Next, next speaker, Lynn Faria at 46 Norville, right next door.
Hello, hi. So my concern is regarding the variance number two. It looks like it's saying that there's going to be no parking available on the space and like currently there's two vehicles parked there and there's two parking, one in the garage and one on the driveway in front. So I'm just wondering about how that's going to be dealt with. And if it is removed as proposed, I'm just wondering what will happen to the current hardscaping because it's currently, when this house is built, it's currently about 85% hardscape and it is on the TRCA land. And I do have an issue with the drainage that the east traffic goes directly to my wooden retaining wall. And currently it is kind of going towards the street along the wall because of the hardscaping, but optimally, if this were to go through, I would hope that they would convert this to soft scape. And so that's it.
Okay, with respect to the parking situation, it does, there is a letter from urban forest, from Transportation Services, rather, advising that the area does comply for front yard parking and he will have to apply for that. It's not guaranteed. It's set out in the, this letter here. And it says that if, you know.
I didn't see any letter regarding.
I'm just saying there's a letter from Transportation with condition. Perhaps, I don't know if you saw that on the Application Center website with respect to this application, but says he has to apply for that. Front yard parking is not guaranteed, and if the owner is not successful in obtaining a front yard parking license or is able to obtain a on-street parking permit instead, then the existing driveway and curb cut does not lead to illegal parking space. And then they require the existing driveway to be closed and restored with sod and they raise curb at their own expense. So there is a letter on file with three conditions of approval from, from Transportation Services. Assuming that's what your concern is, but we'll hear the applicant have, have a chance to respond to your concerns. So other than that, with respect to the built form of the house, though, you have no issues with that?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Faria. Okay, Mr. Brown, you've heard from the neighbors. You have a chance to respond. I tried to assist.
Yeah.
The transportation conditions, but you can certainly do so.
Yes, exactly. Yes, sir. I have received all the documents that you had mentioned previously. I have them up in tabs right now. We will obviously go through the, go through the proper ones to obtain the permit. We will obviously adjust to renovation if we can't get approval for that, probably won't take the garage to rough at all. As far as the east trucks are concerned, it's completely unrelated to any work for this, this project. If there is an issue with drainage in the future, we can obviously assess it and try to find that solution. I can mention that to the property owners as well.
Okay. Committee members, any questions for Mr. Brown or any of the other speakers, or is someone ready to make a motion on this application?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I find the application meets the four tests under the Planning Act, and I move for approval subject to the Transportation Department conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Can I just make a friendly amendment? Apparently TRCA still requires a permit before obtaining a building permit. Is that, is that correct?
That's really not a condition. It's just an advisory to the applicants. It's not really in the form of a condition.
Okay, in that case, I can second Mr. Taylor's motion.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Alderson. All in favor? Okay, unanimous approval. Or maybe, Ms. Ruddock, are you in favor of this application?
I abstaining because I missed the presentation.
Okay, thank you. So we, motion carries with one abstention. I noticed you didn't.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Brown, and thank you, neighbors. We'll move on then to item number 15. 46 Rockingham Drive. This is again, to construct a new detached dwelling with an attached garage. There are, we have a revisit, revision page and highlighted in yellow. Although there doesn't seem to be any change. Usually it shows where the, the highlight, it changes, but there are changes. It is only tied to variance number three. It just wasn't highlighted, it was hard to see. So the maximum permitted height has been reduced from 10.48 to 9.98, whereas 9.5 is permitted. So that is the change. We have a zoning waiver. We have a survey, revised plans. A site-specific zoning bylaw, covering letter. And as I just mentioned, the height reduction and planning has weighed into advise they have no further concerns following the height reduction. And there are three letters of support and Transportation has no objection. The speaker on this application, we have Bogdan Artis, the owner. And, oh, the architect available for questions, so no one here in opposition.
Mr. Chairman, it's only, only Mr. Artis, the owner.
Okay, okay, so the architect is not going to speak anyway, so. Mr. Artis.
Hello.
Hello, sir. I just gave an introduction to the application. You've made, you've reduced the height. Community planning now seems to be satisfied now that you've done that. And we have your cover letter. So is there anything like you'd like to add, or perhaps we'll just see if committee members have any questions for you?
Yeah, so as, as you know, there is a ton of development going on in the area. And we think our proposal reinforces the prevailing character of the neighborhood. And we believe that the requested variances meet the four-part test for a minor variance.
Okay. And like I said, we do have three letters of support. Committee members, any questions for Mr. Artis? Or is someone ready to bring a motion?
So I guess I'm prepared to make a motion. I'll make a motion. Let me just, I know it's on this. Make a motion. I believe that it does indeed meet the four tests. I'll make a motion to approve. Community planning is now okay, transportation is okay, and we have three more letters of support based on, with the condition, urban forestry condition number one.
Thank you. Second for Ms. Alderson's motion? Oh, Mr. Palmer?
Mr. Palmer, second.
Okay, all in favor? Unanimous approval. Thank you, Mr. Artis.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, item number 16, 5 Gibson Avenue. This is an application to construct a new detached dwelling with an integral garage. And there are we have a revision notice page as in the last one, in revised in yellow. And this time it was, the length has been reduced from 19.8 to 18.96. That is highlighted in yellow. And they've crossed out the reference to including the rear bay window. There are eight variances. The length has been reduced from 19.8 to 18.96. Urban forestry is recommending a denial of the application. TRCA has no objection. And 11 Gibson, which shares a boundary, I assume there is no seven or nine, is, are, is opposed and has written in with a letter of objection. And registered to speak, we have the agent, Mehdi Ajvand, and then as well the neighbor at 11 Gibson. Registered to speak. Okay. Mr. Ajvand? Welcome.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so you're aware of, I just introduced the application. There is a letter of objection, so I guess we should get a brief presentation from you. We have your revised plans, your revised notice, where you've reduced the height.
Oh, the length, not the height.
Sorry, the length, the length, the length from 19.
Yeah.
Yes, okay, sorry about that.
Okay.
So we have the neighbor next, sorry, at 11, which I guess is next door with concerns. So I don't know if you'd like to just wait to hear what those concerns are and have a chance to respond, or if you'd like to make us a brief presentation of your application?
I can do the brief presentation of the application. I already have the concern of the neighbor. If there is anything new, I can address that.
Okay.
For today, we are asking for eight variances. The property is located at the end of Gibson Avenue. We have a tree lots so irregular at the end of Gibson Avenue that that's, as I tried to put it in our supportive document at the bottom right corner of this page that is on the screen. We are asking for lot coverage and FSI for the lot coverage. We are asking just for 1.3 extra percentage, which is very minor. For the floor space index, GFA, which is the number is 0.69, and it is one of the concern of the neighbor. The reason for that, actually, you know, the actual FSI that we are asking is 48.7. And zoning bylaw in terms of definition of FSI in properties located in regulated area by TRC, they should exclude, they excluded the area the regulated area by TRC. So in terms of calculating GFA, they excluded around 2,200 square feet from the actual property and then calculated. If you look at the, the first page of that supportive, the second page of that supportive document I submitted, I marked the area they calculated for, just in terms of GFA, FSI calculation. At the, yeah, top left corner of this page, exactly. The area that I marked with the red hatch is just the area calculated while our property is much more bigger. So the actual number of FSI is 48.7, not 69. In terms of the required front setback, as you can see at the bottom corner of this page, we have one north neighbor which is, which has huge property and they have just a garage beside our property. And also our southern neighbor is located very odd, very, I know it's not aligned with the rest of the neighborhood. What we try to achieve over here, the front setback is, the required front setback is six meter or average of the neighbors. Since our neighbors are, both neighbors are unusual and it's not comply with the dominant character of a street. We try to comply with the northern part of Gibson Avenue, as you can see at the bottom of, right bottom corner of this page. And we are proposing eight meter setback, which is almost same as those northern property as keeping the dominant character of Gibson Avenue. And that's number 11, the required front setback is calculated based on average front setback of the northern garage and also the odd located southern neighbors. For, for side yard setback variance, which is another concern of our neighbor, if we can have the first page of the supportive document I submitted. So the property is so irregular, okay, and on northern part, we have unparalleled property online. And the variance that we are asking is just for the marked area. I tried to indicate the four feet setback line, and as you can see, the rest of our building is, has more than required. Even at the back of property, we have 2.38 meter, which is almost double of a minimum required. And this setback is, this setback requirement is just for that portion. And consequently, for the variance number eight, which is regarding the roof if's projection, is the same situation, and the shape of building is the way that we cannot have any downpipe at that stage, which is going to concern our neighbor probably. So basically, it's just a small portion of property, and it's calculated to the closest part of the building. So generally, in reality, the building has more aside setback. Regarding the building length variance, which is, we are asking for 19.8 meter, including the bay window. As you can see, again, the location of our neighbor is the way that even by asking this, we are, we are even not aligned with our neighbor, you know? We are even have more more setback from the neighbor's property. Sorry, I have to correct myself. We reduce the length for 18.96 instead of 19.8 mentioned in the public hearing notice. You're asking for 18.96. And still we have far away from our neighbor backyard, even you know, our southern neighbor is, you know, has more, is closer to their rear property line than us. And I believe that's it. For the wall height variance, we are asking for just very minor changes over there, considering the style that we're proposing over there. I believe that it's so minor. And also TRC did support our application. The variance regarding the setback from from top of a slope is calculated just to the walkout area, not to the building. We have 6.46 centimeter setback from the top of a slope, the actual building, and the walkout is, has four meters setback. Although we are still improving the existing condition of the property. And we also did the back and forth with the planner of the case, and they supported our application.
Okay. Okay, thank you, sir. Let's then hear from the neighbor. I'm just looking, I'm trying to see on your plans and on the survey. We see that the house at number three is irregularly shaped, sort of close to the lot line. But that's not the neighbor that's objecting. The neighbor that's objecting is on the other side, and it doesn't even really show. I'm saying all it can see is an existing frame garage. It doesn't show enough over to the other side to show the actual dwelling. It's sort of, unless it's, that's shown on some other document that we could get up on the.
It is located on the supportive document I submitted. At the bottom right corner, there is a bigger context plan shows the building, because it's far, far away from our property line. We couldn't include it in the survey.
Okay. Yeah, it doesn't even show, it just shows the existing frame garage and something behind that, which you really can't see. Okay, so let's listen to, hear from the neighbor at 11, and again, confirm those concerns other than, we have the, we have the letter saying that they object. We have the, we have the letter uh, saying that they object to all of the variances. Or three of them, I believe. Uh, yeah, the ones dealing with the uh, proximity to the uh, the side yard setback. And the roof eaves and the footprint, uh, now the size of the house as well. So let's hear from the neighbor. You'll have a chance to respond, sir. Is Sheila McEryth there?
Yes. I, I am Sheila McEryth and I am the sole owner currently of eleven Gibson Avenue, which has uh, the last person to say, is a large piece of property. And our house is not the issue. Our issue is that we have owned this property for years. And we bought it um, saying that we would be stewards of the property because it's a unique and wonderful piece of property. And uh, we know though, uh, I'm eventually going to have to sell. And we know that no doubt a house will be built uh, adjacent to that, our, our mutual property line. And I object to the fact that the only really issues four and eight, variances four and eight, which state that the building itself is to be built. And I have to think of imperial measurements as opposed to metric. And so having converted them, I say that the hu, the building itself is being built two feet from our property line and the eaves will extend so that's up to three inches. And I have, we have several new houses built in the area and I've been talking to the owners and the, and the builders. And they have all complied with this uh, setback uh, on the side. It's the side setback that I'm concerned about. That's the only thing really. Both on the point of view of the building itself and the eaves extension. And so I would really like to, to object to that because not for me, but for, uh, to protect the future of, of, of the property.
Yes, okay. Thank you. Okay, so uh, Mr. Ajvand, we've, we've heard the concerns of the neighbor, which is what she stated in her letter. She's concerned with the future redevelopment of her property. And that uh, the fact that it's too close to the side lot line uh, will affect the redevelopment potential uh, of her property at, at some point. So what's your response to that, sir? So you have setbacks on both, you have setbacks on both the the north? You also have one.
No, no, we have just, we have just applying for setback from north. On the south, we are complying with the minimum required, but at this area, aggregated side setbacks as well, which is, you know, another uh, uh, item.
Yeah, the aggregate is one point eight two, whereas three uh, meters, one point two on each side, we're at point six on the north side. It's variance number
Yes.
So that's what the concern is. And um. Committee
Okay, so if I, if I can have, if I can have the first page of the supportive document on the screen.
Sorry, the first page of?
Supportive document I uploaded.
Or the supplemental material?
Yes, please. Okay, so as you can see at the, at the north side, we are just asking for these variants for that small triangle over there. We have tried to have a setback as, as architectural solution to increase the setback at the same size, at the same side that uh, we have a concern neighbor. As I said, at the back of uh, proposed building, we have two point thirty-eight meter setback, which is almost double of what zoning required. And also uh, uh, this uh, uh, this marked triangle is just the corner of garage to be able to provide minimum standard size of garage over there. The rest of building, which is habitable space, has even more than required setback over there.
Yes.
And this, this happened just because the irregular shape of uh, the property. Uh, if the, if we have a parallel property line, we didn't even have to apply for that, for that one. It happens just because irregular shape of property.
So sir, it's just that little dark triangle at the top near the side of the garage? And I, I see what you're saying that although you were clo, little bit closer there on that triangle, that little shaded area, you're giving, when you step, that's the first, let's say twenty-five percent of the house, but then the rest of it scales
Yes.
back even more than you were required. You could have
Exactly.
the balance being closer to the lot line, correct?
Exactly, exactly.
Okay, so that you feel is a mitigating factor, that it's just that small area that, that uh, offends the bylaw?
Yes, sir.
So it really wouldn't affect the neighbor uh, future development plans. Committee members, um, any questions then? Last minute questions for uh, either the neighbor or the applicant? Or is someone ready to weigh in with a motion?
A question for the applicant. Um, given the unique situation uh, you have with the property and the concerns of the neighbor, would you be okay if uh, if we gave approval to this? If we tied it to certain plans dealing with the setbacks on the north side of the property?
Sure, definitely. You're okay with that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a wonderful suggestion. I'm surprised that community planning hasn't identified that as a condition of approval because obviously the variance is just for that little darkened corner and not for the whole lot, so.
Okay, it looks like Mr. Taylor has a question as well.
Okay, Mr. Taylor?
Yes, I have a question for Mr. Carvelino regarding urban forestry. Um, in their consolidated memo, they requested conditions one, two, and three. And that memo was produced on April twenty-second. Uh, we also have from Urban Forestry a memo dated April nineteenth requesting condition one only. Which one of those conflicting communications should prevail?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Uh, they're from two different sections of urban forestry. The memo, uh, the second memo you referred to with the one condition is from Ravine and Natural Features Protection. And the other memo was from our, our Street Trees and Private Tree Bylaw, uh, Urban Forestry section. So they're both applicable.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, so any further questions or is someone ready to bring a motion?
I'll uh, I'll move for approval. Um, the variances requested are minor in nature and meet the four tests in the Planning Act. And that'll be subject to um, the approval generally tied to the, I guess, the roof plan and maybe the site plan dealing with the variances on the north side of the property. Um, and subject to all of the forestry conditions that have been uh, suggested in, in two different memos.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Palmer. So just, Mr. Carvelino, just to clarify that. We uh, we're okay with that. We don't need that condition in terms of what plan we should be built since constructed as illustrated on the blank with respect to the the north side yard setback. That's the way it'll be worded? Okay, so it's a site plan dated or deposited, identified as such? Thank you. Okay. Okay, seconded for Mr. Palmer's motion? Three hands all went up at the same time, so we'll give it to Laura. In alphabetical order. Uh, all in favor? It's obviously unanimous. You have unanimous approval. Thank you, Mr.
Thank you.
Thank you, agent, and thank you, neighbor. Okay, and we're now moving on to our last uh, last item of the morning session. And that is item number seventeen, six Allen Brook Drive. Uh, we're gonna end up with a nice, easy one. Uh, we have um, it's an application to construct a two-story rear addition. There are two variances which are extremely minor, point five over on coverage and point zero one over on the area of the lot. It's a shame that they have to be here for such small uh, variances. And uh, given that very small, uh, there is no comments from neighbors or from city staff uh, other than perhaps urban forestry, which I don't have track of. No, no urban forestry. Okay, so when the speaker, we have William Hall, agent, and the owner available for questions. Mr. Hall?
Yes, this is Bill Hall from Architrite Design Architects.
Okay, so we're finishing off the morning with probably the uh, simplest application.
I wanted to make it easy for you.
Yeah, two extremely uh, minor variances. Um, with respect to this two-story rear addition. So I assume, is there anything you'd like to add before I uh, see if committee members have any questions or if someone's ready to make a motion? Anything you or your client would like to add or we're good to go?
No, I think we're good to go.
Okay, so let's see if there's any questions from committee members or if someone's ready to weigh in with a motion.
I'd like to weigh in with a motion. This is a very straightforward application that meets the four tests, so I move for approval of the variances.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Alderson, seconded. Ms. Riddick, all in favor? Unanimous approval. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. And we uh, I guess adjourned until our, the one o'clock uh, session at one o'clock.